Hi, welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rhona, and I want to start out just by reminding everyone that a week from today, on September 12th, is a Democratic primary election. And anyone who is a registered Democrat gets to choose which seven Democrats will be on the ballot line in November. And I want to urge everyone to vote and also to take the opportunity to find out about the candidates who are running. And also to let people know that if you are an unaffiliated voter, who is not in any party, you can register, I believe, up to noon on Monday with the Democratic Party, vote on Tuesday, and then on Wednesday, go back to being an unaffiliated voter. And we'll talk more about how people who aren't Democrats kind of can get disenfranchised in the city. But here's a voter registration card. It can be done online. You can go into City Hall and do it. If you want to have a say, there are a lot of different ways to have it. So now veering away from that, my guest today is Shanice Austin. She is going to be running on the Green Party line in November. Her name is not going to be on the ballot next week, but will be on the ballot on November 7th. So welcome, Shanice.
Thank you, Rhona. Thank you for having me.
And I guess the first thing I wanted to talk to you about is your professional background, because it's not only an interesting background and kind of an inspiring New London story, but it also has relevance, I think, to our city and the challenges we face.
Absolutely.
So do you want to talk a little bit about your, well, from childhood to now?
Sure, absolutely. So I think it's important that voters get to understand and know a little bit about the candidates that are running. So I'm very transparent. That's a part of who I am as a person, but I also think politically, it's a part of what I would bring to the city government if elected. So a little bit about my background really quickly. I grew up in New York City. My family, though, has been residents of Connecticut since the early 1920s. My great uncle was in the Navy. He served on a ship that was stationed in London, in sub bases. So we would come up as children during the summer. So New London was our summer home. I had plenty of cousins and aunts and family that was here. So I've known the city a long time. My mother decided to move me and my four siblings to New London when I was 14. So I got a chance to spend primarily my high school years here. And, you know, so my foundation is New York, but my heart is definitely New London, New London resident. Graduated from the University of Connecticut and spent my career in higher ed. So I was the Director of Diversity for the School of Business and spent, you know, probably 10 to 15 years doing that. And then I transitioned. I decided in 2021 that I wanted to retire. I could do so, thankfully, through, you know, some smart decisions and a little bit of luck, you know, because luck plays a strong role in things in life. And I transitioned to opening up a financial services business. So I am a licensed principal, which means I can manage and oversee investments, not only for myself, but also manage and oversee other agents. And we'll be opening up our new office at Manonah Square, so I'm very excited about that in downtown New London. So that's a little bit about my background. I'm passionate about, you know, being involved in the city. I'm passionate about finances, and I'm passionate about how we move the city forward. And that's what really was the calling to make me decide to run this year. Retired, quote unquote. My time was my own, so I have more time now, and I wanted to devote some of that time to my passion of politics in the city.
And you spent at least some time on the Economic Development Committee Commission.
Yeah. So a couple of years ago, I was a commissioner, and I use "was" very lightly, because the commission was disbanded, because not enough folks were on the commission for us to have a quorum. And then I also think the city took away a lot of the roles and responsibilities of the Economic Development Commission and turned those over to other departments within the city. So all of that combined together, you know, is the reason why we no longer have a functioning Economic Development Commission. But also during 2021, I was the co-chair during the pandemic of the Human Resources Committee. So that committee was comprised of New London residents as well as city officials, who were just, you know, we were all locked at home, and we were trying to figure out what we can do as a community to better serve the residents of New London. And, you know, we were, some of the responsibilities consisted of figuring out how to disperse some of the CARES Act money, and then just other funding that came into the city. So that was my most recent role and involvement with that.
Well, I think one of the things that I learned when I was on the Board of Education, I had one term back from 2010, 2011, is that when we have elected boards and commissions like City Council and Board of Ed, it isn't a board that's put together deliberately. Even the appointed boards and commissions, I think City Council or the mayor can kind of try to see if there are people with complementary skills are on these commissions and people maybe whose temperaments are likely to work together well. But when you're on something that's elected, it's kind of like the luck of the draw. And so, you know, my passion has largely been changing the way we think about voting in this city. So, you know, with the primary coming up, I can't vote in it, because I'm not a Democrat, but I do think it's really important for people not to vote by the row, but to really get to know every candidate whose name is on the ballot and figure out your own ideal slate of people who you think could work together for the betterment of the city.
Yeah, I totally agree. I was one of those Democrats. I'm a lifelong Democrat, you know, my family, my mom was a Democrat. That's what we were. And as I've gotten older, I've developed an understanding that the way that we were taught to vote was not in our best interest. And as you mature, your politics needs to mature as well. I think that the idea of voting party line or voting one row is a way to disenfranchise the voters is also very disrespectful to the voters, because what you're saying is that they are not capable of figuring out each individual candidate and deciding to vote. And this isn't just a New London issue. This is a national issue. And I see it more often with the Democratic Party. At the national level, Joe Biden was infamously quoted as saying during a live video interview that "you're not black if you don't vote for him."
That's a little presumptuous.
Very presumptuous. And I think that's, and he's had to walk that back very, very quickly, because what he was saying, and what is often said, and I see it here in New London as well, is that because of who you are, whether it's race, ethnicity, you know, socioeconomic level, you have to adhere to these certain pegs and holes that we're placed into. So if you're black, in Joe Biden's case, if you're black, you need to vote for him, and there should be no other choice or option for you. And I think that's wrong. I think that especially so with local politics. I think it's really important that as residents, you have an opportunity to get to know candidates. I'm local, I'm here, I'm available. Many people know me, but I know that there are some, you know, residents and constituents who don't know me yet. You know, approach me, ask questions. Like I said earlier, I'm very transparent and open to conversations. And in fact, we're going to share a little bit later on. I'm doing some local, you know, get to know me and networking. So we'll share that in a little bit in the segment. But definitely, residents are capable of selecting individual candidates, more so at the local level especially.
That's so true. I mean, we're all neighbors, and we're not necessarily all in the same neighborhood. You know, New London does have pretty notoriously segregated housing patterns, but we do have the opportunity to meet and talk to everyone who is running. We don't have, it isn't that big a city that it's remote.
Six square miles, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we can walk it very, very easily. And the onus is on us as candidates and those that are already in political positions to extend that olive branch to other communities, the communities that may not be where you live. You know, you should be walking into those communities and having conversations with those residents. It's not just about where you live and just your area, because you're serving, if elected to City Council, I will be serving each and every resident in the city, whether you voted for me or not. And my goal is to make sure that I'm serving you to the best of my ability.
And before I move on to talking about the ballot, I wanted to point out something I learned about you recently, is that you've lived in a lot of the different neighborhoods of New London.
I did, I did. We've lived in a lot of different neighborhoods. Really quickly, when my family and I moved from the projects in New York City to New London, and I really did not want to move at 14 years old, but I had no choice, and we came to New London, and we lived at Crystal Avenue. That was our first home, the Crystal Avenue Highrisers that have recently come down.
They were probably fairly new at that point.
No, they have been around since the 1950s and 60s, and I moved here in 1984.
Oh, okay.
So they were already deteriorated and dilapidated. And quite frankly, it was culture shock for me when I came here. And I'm coming from the projects in New York, and it was culture shock, the level of uncare for the residents that even as a young teenager that I felt, living there, that I could clearly see was evident. And so that was our, you know, that was our first home. We lived there for about four years. And then, you know, my mom bought her first home in New London on Shaw Street. She was the first person in our family to be a homeowner. I married and had children, young, and we purchased homes throughout the city. And so we've lived in various neighborhoods from, you know, the northern end of the city to down where we are now, to the southern end, and every place in between. We probably had about five or six different residences in New London.
So no one knows all the neighborhoods better. Well, so this, I hope now viewers indulge me a little, but I've been looking at ballots from various states in the United States, and Connecticut and New York are about the only ones that are set up like a grid rather than just a candidate list. And I have a couple of slides that kind of indicate that where your name is on the ballot actually can influence what your chances are of getting elected, and it's a very deliberate thing. So if you can show the first ballot, I think it's the 2019 New London ballot, and what I want to kind of point out is the Board of Ed side. I hope people can read it, but that year in Board of Education in 2019, six Democrats and one Republican were elected to Board of Ed. And the one Republican who was elected was Rob Pirro, who is admittedly very well-known in town, but he was also helped by the fact that on the ballot, his name was under Jason Catala. And that was a year that by election time, Jason Catala had, I think the Democratic Party was not even supporting his campaign. So, you know, Jason and Rob had worked together many times, and I think it wasn't difficult for voters to think, oh, instead of Jason, I'll vote for Rob Pirro. And I wanted to notice that the other Republican candidate was Susan Tierney, who was running as an incumbent Board of Ed member. She was not elected in 2019. So now, let's look at the ballot from two years earlier, from 2017. And that's also got its own interesting story. We'll have to look at it first. Can we see the second slide?
There we go.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Now, if you look at, this was the first time Susan Tierney ran, and she was elected, but if you look, she's under a blank spot. One of the seven Democratic endorsed candidates withdrew as a candidate at a date too late for them to be able to name a replacement. So Susan was under a blank, and she was elected. And I believe that there are people who look at these ballots and think you go down row, the column eight, and they feel as though everyone is running head to head.
Right.
In that column, and that Susan Tierney was running, like, unopposed in her column. It's a misconception that nowhere does the ballot say that that's the case. The ballot says vote for any seven, but just the layout of the ballot gives that mistaken impression that there were some head-to-head contests and there aren't.
Yeah, well, I mean, you hit it right on the head, Rhona. It's intentional. It's intended to get the voter to think that you're voting that each candidate in that row, the vertical row, are competing against each other only.
Right.
And voters don't realize, and I made that mistake too. You know, we're not given a whole lot of education really about voting. When you're going into the booth or when you're getting your ballot, you're given some brief instructions, you're trying to get in and get out, and make, I mean, this is the reality. And I don't think that voters are intentionally voting the way that the outcomes are showing. I think a lot of it has to do with how the ballot is laid out, as well as the marketing. And the marketing goes along with how the ballot is laid out.
Yeah, vote for line A all the way.
Yeah.
And it's worked the other way, too. Back in 2015, I think, a member of our New London community, who I won't name, but who was a very educated person, not someone who's involved in the community, on election nights, we had four Green Party candidates that year, two for City Council, two for Board of Ed, and this individual said to me on election night, "I voted for all four of the Green Party members, even though I couldn't vote for anyone else."
Wow.
They had this misconception that they were only allowed to choose a line to vote on, and they couldn't vote on other lines.
Yeah.
And I said, "Thank you, but for next time, no. You can spread your votes around. They can be arranged any way you want."
Any way you want.
As long as you don't vote for more than seven, it's good. They all count.
You can pick and choose your voters. You can pick and choose who you want to vote for across party lines. So you can vote Democrat, you can vote Republican, you can add in the Green Party. That mixture, especially at the local level, is so critical and key. You do not want to have a party, a government that is singular in party. And the reason why, part of the reason why, is you want to bring in diverse ideas and thoughts. You want to have different strategies, fully vetted and discussed and talked about. And the only way that you can really do that is if you have people that are thinking differently, right, that are, might have other needs that are being ignored, you know, overlooked. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of that when I talk and share about my platform and what I'm running on, but I think we've seen a lot of missteps with that in the city when we have the City Council that is by and large Democrat, the mayor is Democrat, and everyone that they appoint, he gets to appoint for department heads, are also people that think the same as you.
Yeah.
You cannot have that in city government, and we need to change that, quite frankly.
And there's a little legal part about it, too. When the Freedom of Information Act was passed, I believe Elie Rossa was governor at the time, political parties are exempt from it. So political, you know, parties are allowed to make policy decisions behind closed doors, which shouldn't be a problem. I know, you know, sometimes we, Green Party people, want to discuss things and figure out what our own perspective is, but if you also have a monopoly on the council.
Absolutely.
All those behind the closed-door conversation, that wasn't just the first conversation, that's the last conversation.
Exactly.
But if there are various parties, and they all had their own internal conversation, but they have to be in public to have that last conversation, and that is so important to let the diversity express itself.
Absolutely. And I also want to point out that when you have a mixed government, it does not mean that different projects won't get accomplished. And I think that is folks' underlying fear that, you know, things won't happen at the local level if you have a mixed government. That's not the case, because if it's a good idea, and we're all in it for the community and making sure that we're doing what's best for our city, then you have to state the case as to why this is a good idea, you know? And we would be able to compromise, we're going to have to, in order to work together. And I think that is so important. It's a lesson that we as adults need to do, but also that we pass on to our children and let our children see, because they're the next generation of voters, right? We have to compromise. We have to work together. And if they're not doing it at the national level, we definitely need to be doing it at the local level.
We sure do.
We need to, we have to, you know? It's important.
It is important. I just, before we get out of the whole ballot thing, I wanted to ask to show just a couple, quickly, a couple of ballots, what they look like in some other states, because we in Connecticut think everyone does things the way we do, right? But in other spots like this, actually, almost every other state looks different. In most of these cases, the candidates for an office are listed. Sometimes the order is randomized, sometimes their order they're in is by party order within that box. All of these ballots, you know, there are partisan elections, so you know what party the people are endorsed by, but it's just, you can see that if you have a list, where your name is in the list does not nearly so much affect your chances. And here are just a couple of other ones from other states. And whether it's Massachusetts or Rhode Island, or District of Columbia, or North Carolina, or Georgia, most ballots in most places look like this one. And then, before we leave the ballot thing entirely, we have a couple more ballots from the primary that's coming up, and we can look at. This is what a Democratic primary ballot looked like in Maine a few years ago. Once again, this is a ranked choice voting ballot, actually. The candidates are listed, and you don't just choose one, you can rank them in the order that you like them, which is something that has been considered in the state of Connecticut in party primaries. I don't know what the status is right now, but there are some groups working on that. So, and let's look, I think the next one we have, sorry this is such a bad picture, but this is what the primary ballot will look like next week.
Yeah.
And once again, it looks like if Fariene and Shanaika are in a head-to-head, and Rihanna and Myrna are in a head-to-head, and everyone else is home free.
Right.
And for one thing, that's not true, you might want to choose your seven, those first, you know, four, Fariene, Shanaika, Rihanna, and Myrna, and choose three from the last group of five. You can really vote for any seven.
Any seven, in any order. So the first two votes, you can vote for or for those folks, if you choose to.
If you choose to.
And then, as Rhona said, mix up your other seven votes. It's your right as a voter, and do not allow the politics to get you to thinking otherwise, as my aunt would say.
And yet, we see things like, if you've seen the literature from the Democratic Party, I think I have a slide of that, too, it really is just telling people to vote A all the way in the primary, and you get the same message in the general election. So I think the only other point, I don't know that we have to really look at those, but I do have one slide. I wanted to just make the point that more parties being represented really help voter turnout. I think it's the slide number nine that I put in there, or slide number eight.
For voter turnout, yeah. No, slide number nine.
Oh, I think I, you know what? I think I reversed the names, though, primary. Yes, it's slide number eight, I think. I made a mistake, I think.
There we go.
Yeah. So these are the mayoral elections in New London, 2011, 2015, 2019. And you can see in the third column how many people voted for mayor, and the total numbers, like, were very variable in 2011. Over 4,700 people turned out to vote. In 2015, only 32, you know, and 100 and change turned out to vote. So when I looked at these numbers, the total votes cast for the Democratic line person and the Republican line person were almost the same every year, about 3,250.
Yep. Yep.
But having more candidates in the race brought out more voters, and I assume because more people found interesting perspectives that they wanted to support.
Correct. I mean, that's what, that's what American politics should be about, you know? You want to bring in as many different people. The voters have to have a choice in order to draw them out. Because that's why I'm so, so happy that, to be running in conjunction with our candidate for mayor, the Green Party's candidate for mayor, Eddie Long, Leon Eddie Long, is running for mayor. And, you know, it's important that, that positions like that do not go uncontested. We need to make sure that people have choice, and that there are options when you're running, when there's a political election, especially for city council, for mayor, and Board of Ed. Those positions are so important that you have the representation.
Right. And in fact, on many of the boards and commissions in town, there is some minority party representation. You know, I'm on planning and zoning, and there are.
It's actually required.
It is required, yes. No more than four regular members and two alternates can be of the same party.
Correct.
And so I am in a seat that is designated for someone who isn't a Democrat. Could be filled by a Republican, or unaffiliated, or Independent Party, or Libertarian, but it can't be filled by a Democrat. And that does force a certain amount of diversity of opinion on that board. But we don't have it in Board of Ed or City Council.
Right.
And before we just start focusing on what your platform, or what is, I do want to let people know that there is going to be a debate on Saturday. I think that's not the last slide. That is slide number nine, maybe. That hearing youth voices, or the People's Budget Coalition, some of the nonprofits in town are hosting. They've invited all of the nine Democratic candidates to participate. And it would be a very good opportunity for anyone who really, who is planning to vote, and is eligible to vote next week, next Tuesday, to learn more about those candidates. Because at every step of the way, we need to, you know, show our preference, show which issues are important to us by choosing champions of the issues.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, this is the Democratic primary debate. So those that are running, and I would love to be there just, you know, because I'm, while I'm also running for office, I'm also a resident of the city, so I'm also a voter.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I won't be able to attend that, because I have a prior engagement. But I encourage each of you in the city to really go out and get to know the candidates. Ask them questions, listen to the debate. It's really different at the local level versus what you see on television for national debates. So, yeah, and this is your life. Like, the decisions that we make at the local level will impact your day-to-day life. And so it's just really important that folks come out.
Now, now, we have half an hour to talk about you. So one of the really interesting intersections between the work you've been doing and where the Green Party has been for the last few years is related to, I don't know, I guess I label it the difference between performative action or symbolic action and really substantive action. And, you know, do you want to kind of maybe give a view of what you see council has done that's right, but where we can do better?
Yeah. I mean, so one of the things that, and I'll give a recent example, is in 2021, the city of New London declared racism a public health crisis, right? Like so many companies, and universities, and colleges around the country, and corporations, and cities and towns, all made this grand, grandiose declaration. But the city of New London, like many other places, two years later, has shown to do very little to address that. So what are we doing as a city to address racism, not only at the local level? But I also think it's really, really important that as we move forward and grow, that we, that we look at historical wrongs and correct them. And there is a measure of correction that can happen. The records are there. And again, I, this is my perspective at both the local level as well as the national level. Having performative gestures such as holidays. Just yesterday, we celebrated Labor Day, which is about, you know, American workers, and celebrating how, you know, we contribute to building the economic fabric of the country. Yet, as a country, we've done nothing to address the stolen labor of folks who built this country. So how are we celebrating Labor Day without addressing stolen labor of the American descendants of American freedmen here in this country? I mean, and there's so many, just so many examples like that at the national level as well as the local level, because we fall in prey to that. You know, our local leaders have fallen prey to only attaching low-hanging fruit, you know, and not doing the hard work of challenging and demanding and fighting that need to be done. And if we could leverage our resources, leverage our relationships at the local level to our state representatives, to those that then represent us in Congress, those are the types of things that I would like to see happen here in our city as we move forward with real substance in terms of the declarations that we make.
And, you know, I'm Jewish, and so I grew up in kind of a minority group, not a suppressed minority, but, and, but over the years, I've kind of observed that minority groups, low-status groups, often get kind of lumped together. You know, I think you and I had a conversation about, you know, even at the state government level, there's the Black and Puerto Rican caucus. And yet, those two caucuses might have some issues in common, but they have a lot of different history and different issues. I mean, the descendants of slaves and freedmen is not really the same as the colonialism that was in Puerto Rico. And yet, they kind of get glommed together. And we have that really beautiful rainbow flag in the intersection of, you know, Golden Street and Eugene O'Neill, which I understand is going to be installed in a more permanent way that will keep its colors nice. And once again, you know, there are lavender stripes and brown stripes. And it's like, we want to acknowledge everyone all together, and they're not all the same. So what would you define as some of the issues that are specific to the descendants of freedmen? Because there are a lot of that group in New London.
Absolutely. I mean, Black Americans were the only group that were enslaved on American soil. The only group. And so our grievance, our, our history is vastly different than any other group. We were also the only group that had very, very long sustaining. And I think that's important, because I think other groups have had issues with racism, or, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
But they were able to move beyond that. And because of Black Americans, the color of our skin, we, and then the targeted effort at all levels, federal, state, and local levels, really disenfranchising this group, this racial group along, disenfranchising us along racial lines is something that is not seen in any other group. And that, again, I think there is, there is an issue when we lump all diverse groups together, because history matters, you know? Legacy matters, who we are matters. And we have to have that distinction. And there's nothing wrong with distinction. There's nothing wrong with identifying a specific legislation that, that need to target certain groups. Because it was legislation that got us where we are today, and there's going to be specific legislation that's going to have to make the change. And we have to be willing to stand up and fight. And those that are our allies have to stand with us and say, and recognize that as a specific group, and I'll speak for Black Americans, because that's who I am. And I support other groups, you know, for their fight. But we have to, they have to stand with us separately along our fights, because it's all different, and the outcomes are going to be different. The gravity of the situations are different. And the other key thing that I point, I'll point out without going into a lot of history, is the American freedmen fought for their freedom. And there were federal promises that were made. They changed the tide of the war. Had American freedmen not joined at the levels that they joined, they represented over 10% of the Union forces. We, there are some that believe that the Union Army may not have won the war.
Wow.
So, you know, we, we have to address those things. And it's really important that local governments, just to bring it back to local politics, that we leverage our resources, our relationships, and really speak to that. Especially when we make, when we make claims of racism being a public health crisis, we need to follow that up with action. You know, what are we doing to address that? And at all levels. We're talking about one group, but also, you know, we have to look at health, we have to look at housing, we have to look at all the different areas that racism is affecting folks in our community.
So from a government point of view, how can we help make progress in this area? You know, I think about the housing issue that, I mean, there's certainly a legitimate claim that, you know, freedmen really altered the course of history in this country and in the state. But as recently as like the 1960s, when we saw urban renewal, it was the areas of the city that had Black ownership that were subject to being demolished for the interstate highway or for the housing projects. So those same descendants of, you know, the freedmen were also impacted more recently within our lifetimes.
Yeah. And that is, is what continues to plague our community. It's ongoing. It's one thing after another. You even think about the Great Migration, the Great Migration, when Black Americans left the South and drove. And the lesson that they teach us is seeking new opportunity. But the reality is that they were, my uncles, my great-uncles, my grandfather, they were running for their lives, you know, and coming up to New York or going out west. It's that constant starting over again. And so when you mentioned urban renewal, so my great uncle, who again, left from Pensacola, Florida, came to New Lon, he was in the military, in the Navy, got stationed here in New London, laid roots and foundations in East New London, owned a home, owned a restaurant, owned apartment buildings. That got all taken away through eminent domain. And again, once again, starting over again, that cycle of starting over again. And I think it's important that as a city, when we, now that the high, now that we realized that urban renewal was a failure, right? We have to call a spade a spade. It was a failure, not only in New London, but across the country, right? And we realized that segregating people by race and by economic level is not the best thing to do. And so they've taken down the high-rises, and now they want to do, they, they want us to forget the history. And one of the things that I'll share with the audience is my, my great aunt Minnie, she had a house in East New London. She lived to be 100 years old, and she passed away in New London. The reason why I know this history, know this story, because she talked about it to anyone that would listen. She missed her home in East New London. And I didn't, she would talk about East Main Street. And I was like, that street doesn't exist. What is she talking about? But as I started to do some research, it was, she was right. She talked about her home, she talked about her gardens. And that's what I think, I think oftentimes, we think history of time sort of removes that away, and so we no longer have to address it. No, we still have to address it. And we have to make, before we move forward with development of that land, I think there needs to be some serious conversation in the city about how we address eminent domain in East New London, and to some extent over in Fort Trumbull as well, it's a different group.
Right.
But same thing. We cannot just think taking land, having an idea. And the difference between East New London and Fort Trumbull was that land was taken for public use, you know? Highways and the project, public use. And so now, it's being turned over into development, where Fort Trumbull was just taken for development.
Wait, it didn't have that step of 50 years in between.
Right, right. But we need to address those things. And we need to do more to address it than just a sign or a plaque. Those things are good, because it shares with folks who may not know what happened, what happened. But we need to go beyond that as city officials, and really come up with concrete ways to address monetarily, because we live in a capitalistic society, and I'm all about, you know, what you take away, you give back the same mode. And so it was taken for economic purposes, economic wealth was lost, that needs to be returned. And so we need to have those conversations, bring in experts to talk about what that would look like. Now, that's not federal reparations. I want to make that clear. Federal reparations needs to happen from the federal government. But there are things that local cities and towns can do to address their role and what occurred during those time periods. And we need to have real conversations about what that looks like.
And one of the reasons that I'm really happy that you're running this year is, you know, it seemed, we're sort of in the middle of an economic development spurt in a way, but it's, oh, wow, we only have five minutes? Okay. In a way, but, but it only looks like we're looking like one quarter or two quarters, or maybe a year or two into the future. And in your business experience right now, you kind of balance what the resources available are and creating a just system, but also in how individuals can take control in some ways. So what would you recommend from a budgetary point of view? What should the city's decisions, financial priorities be?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that really stands out for me is the new legislation that just passed at the state level to make financial literacy a requirement for graduation. So one of the things. So, one of the things a city like New London can do is be really intentional about the curriculum piece of what that looks like for our city and our residents. Because my concern and fear is that if we're not proactive, big banks and others will use this as an opportunity to indoctrinate young people with the, with concepts outside of building wealth. And I think the city can really take a proactive approach in addressing the wealth disparity in our city and in our state, and just being really intentional about how, what we're teaching young people with this new financial literacy requirement. So, that's one thing. I also think that our city is, is very much, our city leaders are very much focused on big picture, right? And this comes from when you have ideas that are looking to move the city forward. You know, you got to get to the, you got to get to the end goal, right? You got to get to score a touchdown, get to the end zone. But what's often missed are those yards along the way, right? And those, those small steps that's often missed, I think. And that comes from not having a mixed government. You know, because there's no one that's out there saying, well, what about this? Well, what about that? Or, let's take the housing situation here in our city right now. And we'll look at both the rental housing market as well as the homeownership market. Right now, in New London, you would be very hard-pressed to find a home under $200,000 to purchase. That prevents a lot of people out of the market from being able to own a home, right? And so, how are we addressing that as a city? Like, and we can't always look at, we can't always focus on outsiders coming in. We have to address those that are here and affording them the same opportunity. So, what does that look like? The rental housing market, again, because we have all of these new, because we have people that have big-picture thinking only and not thinking about microeconomics, they miss the fact that when you take down affordable housing, like Crystal Avenue, for example, and the plans to add new housing, it's several years down the road, you're going to have a period of time where people are not going to have affordable housing. What do we do for those people? Right now, the rental market is 1,200 to 1,500 for three bedrooms, which are very hard to come by. I have some ideas on what we can do as a city to address that. But it has to be a part of what we're doing. We can't talk about two years down the road, three years down the road. We have to think about what we're doing right now with us, for our residents. And then, next time, planning, looking at planning at both the macro and at the micro level.
Okay, now, in the last two minutes, you have to come back and we'll have to talk about that again.
Last two minutes, yes, yes, yes.
I want you to talk about your networking event. And we do have a slide for that, the very last one.
All right, awesome. So, I'm inviting members of the community, me and my colleague, Arianna Wiley. She's also local to New London, born and raised, or at least raised here in the city. Wanting to get to know business owners, right? She and I both are in financial services. We want to hear from business owners. We want to hear from neighbors in the communities. Really a networking event, just to talk and find out what, what we're doing right, right? What's great about the city, there's so many great things. But also, what are opportunities? What are other areas that we need to be getting better at and improving? So, reach out to us. And there'll be more on that on our social media. So, if you're not following me on Facebook or Instagram, please do so.
Well, thank you, Shanice. We didn't cover everything, but we'll have more opportunities. But thanks for coming on and talking about your platform and your ideas, and also indulging me to talk a little bit about how people vote in New London and how we can change, how we do it. So, thanks a lot. And we will be back, actually, we will be back live in two weeks. Keith Kimball, who's running again for Board of Ed, will be my guest then. And we'll see you then. And thanks again, Shanice.
Thank you.